Okay, we are back in session. We had an executive session. One topic of conversation was the contract with Glen Rock. We reviewed that, made changes, and we're sending that back to the solicitor for the police commission. We also talked about personnel change for the immediate future. I'm gonna take the sitting seat on the police commission and Kim is going to take over the alternate position that I held. That's pretty much what happened. Next stop.
Actually, the second part didn't happen until we came in here.
What part?
You couldn't change, you can't change the committee assignment when you come back into the session.
Well, that's true.
We didn't do that back there.
That's true. We did not do that back there. We did that, I have.
Just to clarify.
Yeah. I'll just pour the water on my head. Okay. Did you want to give the police commission report or would you rather I update that?
Well, you all have the targets apparently. The one was from 6:18 to 7:15. Didn't we get two, Erica? Two different ones?
No.
Okay. I guess we keep in mind that then later you can see where the reports fall on your other sheet if you want to give the balance of the report. Go ahead.
Sure. The July 13th robbery at the Shrewsbury and Subway. They were both arrested. They're in jail in Maryland. Once they get through their processes there, they will come in and face charges. July 18th, New Freedom had a crop dusting incidents over by Summit Grove. Approximately 60 kids, 12 staff got called in as mass casualty. Everybody responded, good coordination. It was deemed that everything was okay. They gave, I guess, the children, lost their down some, so forth. They said smoke on the rail. There was no incidents there. That went well. They've been having an exorbitant amount of 911 hangup calls. I think New Freedom was in the lead. That was due to a cellphone update. And so they're just asking that you look at your phones and to see what the settings are after the update. Our newest officer, Wall, he is doing well. He was still paired up on his shift with somebody and he will be going on his own soon. He saw my sons of Sicily this week. He was nice and chipper and happy and said that he loved it being here. Lot different, very happy. And our citizens have been nice to him, which I appreciate.
Where did you come from?
Baltimore.
That's why it's Baltimore.
It's a lot different.
Not surprising.
Five years, Baltimore. We voted, yep, on a 457 plan. It's kind of like a 401K where the officers can invest more funds into there so that they, especially for some of our officers that are nearing retirement, are able to get some investments going to grow their retirement before they leave.
Just officer funded? There's no matching on it right now, so.
Anything for fire? I had a meeting with the EMS and fire. As I said, I got some copies of that fire tax total and the expenses that were taken out of it. Trying to get EMS, they're not in a real good shape right now. They, as I said, they need a new chassis for the one vehicle. I think it's a Ford 550 because it's about shot. The other one, they're still having problems with, they're still having problems with the engine. They've had it in for maintenance about five different times. Their problem is that they've got to take it back under warranty to a specific shop and they have not been able to fix it in the four times it's been back. Equipment, they are gonna be needing some major equipment to replace on their ambulance and still hoping to be able to do something with the chase truck. The EMC committee, I think, is probably gonna meet again shortly. Our peer review study was, went to DCED and the report is to be, come back to the group very shortly after not hearing anything for six months. But they have hired a couple of new people. They've increased rates to try to keep people because what's happening is there's, they're coming in, they work their contract and then they go to UPMC or they go to Wellspan or money. I do have a draft that I can, that I can share with their want list. I don't think we'll be able to do it. It's about $400,000. But they're in a real good, real good condition. I did ask for an expense and revenue report and I got a wish list instead. So I re-requested that report so that we can take a look at what we want. They're considering whether they want an EMS tax from us and how it will affect their billing. They've just changed billing companies, so they haven't gotten their first report back. They went with the same company, I think it's called Commonwealth?
How would any EMS tax impact their billing?
That's what they have to find out. Something in the way the EIN number is between the fire company and EMS has the same number and their billing, that's what they, they have to find out for billing if it would or how it would. Because what we're doing is we're basically paying them for services and that would be, it's kind of like Medicare. Medicare's paying for services and that's all you can ask for.
No, actually, they're paying for, you're paying, the tax is paying for readiness. When you call, they're paying for service. Because I'm dealing with this with a municipal emergency services authority or a length of county.
Well, then maybe you and I can have a chat on that.
It's, you can check with Corner Start or all the builders.
Corner Start.
That's where they bill her through and yeah. But it shouldn't, it shouldn't impact that. In fact, we're talking to Keith Korsch there on that very issue you were mentioning.
That's, that's what they weren't sure about. So maybe you and I can have a talk about that and kind of approach that. That's all I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
He was trying to tell me and I was ignoring him.
I just wanted to say that kudos to Glen Rock, New Freedom and Shrewsbury for once again this year putting on the fire camp.
Oh, yeah. I was wondering.
For kids from 12 to 16 to try to get volunteers and it was very well received, very well done. Kudos to them.
How many, they said they got two volunteers this year?
Each company.
Each company, so a total of six came out of that, so that was really good. Yeah, thank you.
And we brought three more firefighters out of probation, you know, and start a probationary period, out of probationary period in the firefighter staff.
Engineering report?
My question on 4C, where would those minutes be posted on the borough website?
I'm not sure where, I mean, it's an ongoing.
Well, you know, rec minutes are put up there, so this, would it be put under rec minutes? I guess that'd be a good place for it, right?
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Put rec minutes, or under rec.
Do you want to do that now or should we wait until we have a survey done?
Well, if you had a meeting and had minutes, they should go on there under rec.
There weren't minutes actually pre before that.
It was.
Really just minutes.
Do they have to take minutes for?
It's working session, it's not.
Or in a committee though?
It's a committee.
Yeah. So it should be minutes.
It's very community.
If it's a committee, there should be minutes, Captain.
Yeah.
Some of them you'd post them as.
No, they do post it.
Does it really meet the definition of a borough?
Absolutely. This is, could be potentially millions of dollars are being spent, absolutely.
Or the committee's not making a determination on the dollars spent.
But it's the discussion of getting there. You're paving the road to get there, so transparency, it'd be great to have the minutes available for people to follow.
Well, I think Ryan kind of reported on what we've covered so far. We're really just identifying what, what's in each park. It's not, you know, and that could, that could certainly be, be put in, yeah, put out as what's in each park. Not sure there's any context to it at this point, but.
Are we talking about two different things, like your committee and the engineer's report?
No, no. This is, this is from warehouse. Dan Creep is, is preparing the master, the feasibility and master plan. So he's, right now, it's really just a, that's why it's kind of a little bit difficult because it's really just an information gathering, you know, he's gathering all of this information in order to put it into a feasibility plan.
I think, could you just post that email that he sent with what the park?
Oh, yeah, he could do that. We could do that.
It was clean, it was very bulleted and understanding. Well, it says preparing meeting minutes, right there. So there's minutes to that meeting and I'm just asking that that be posted on the rec.
Yeah, we'll post his, we'll post his email back to us. It has bullets on it.
Yeah, great. Whenever you guys have meetings, post it there in the rec. And on the Arrow report, I know you mentioned this briefly in the treasures report, but this Arrow provided support for the smoke on the rail event. Why do we need an engineer?
They help with creating in our GIS software so that we can map out all the vending spaces as part of their sponsorship.
So it was free?
As a response to shit.
That actually could be an extra too.
Yeah, the groundwork.
Change.
Yep.
Of course.
The municipal engineering review, New Haven, is that sometimes referred to as NH? Is that the property ever by Freedom Hills?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a blueprint of that developments plan?
We had a staff meeting for the, for the plan and went through their first review phase. Right now, we only have electronic copies.
Why does the fire department have a copy of their blueprint? To determine where the fire hydrants are gonna go. We haven't even had going through what all of our zoning and hearing, hearings and.
Oh, they don't, they don't need to have a hearing. They need to go to planning commission.
Or planning commission.
They didn't get through, they didn't get through their staff review yet.
I was just wondering if we had a plan and the fire company has a complete plan of the development.
They didn't get it from us.
No, I know they didn't get it from us. They got it from the owner.
The design engineer may have provided it then, but we didn't put on board to put it in the fire. Well, it's not, well, only if the design engineer's name's Phil. Fire hydrants get placed.
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Contact them if you're up.
Yeah. I mean, they've still had issues to work through, so.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought. And we might have issues to work through with them, so. I was just curious. I think I texted you or emailed you something about that while I was at the meeting because I couldn't understand why they.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely.
Right. Anything else?
On the rail crosswalk improvement, do we actually get a letter from them saying or the, from the supplier? I don't remember when the contract was signed, but it's hard to believe that it's taken in long to get a hold of it.
Yeah, I mean, basically that was supposed to be finished up in December. And we're still waiting on.
They have, they've got some work done down there. Concrete foundations and that kind of thing, but that's it.
Yeah, only because we're, only because we're waiting on that package, that full package.
I just wonder if the, I mean, they must have shot through it, but I wonder if the supplier who's gonna do that sent a letter saying, okay, here's, here's the reason why. I mean, we've contacted and we pushed them. There's a lot of people that use that and, and, yeah, I'm, it's sort of half done and.
I'm almost positive warehouse has already reached out directly to the manufacturer.
Oh, I will.
Okay, yeah.
And there's still no sidewalk area in that across the tracks.
Until they get the hold of it.
Okay, that's holding out. Because that would be ADA, that has to be ADA compliant, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
New Freedom Borough Monthly Water Report?
I noticed Singer Road getting cut up a couple of times, Main and Freedom Avenue getting cut up. I see that service connection leaks at the water, something deteriorating going on with that.
They, they actually went and they put sound monitoring equipment on some of the water lines as they enter the house to see if they could hear any leaks and I think they found some leaks.
The one on Broad Street.
Proactive.
Yeah, the one on Broad Street was right across the street from me and that, that water was coming out probably 30 yards away from where the water connects to the resident.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, you're talking about different size pipe, different, different bedding material throughout the borough, different type of pipe. It, it's not that there's one thing causing it, it's just a water system and water systems tend to have leaks periodically and you address them as they pop up. Obviously, if a system's brand new, you're probably not gonna experience it, which still will add a couple, but.
Travis having Singer Road paved recently and seeing it, it's been cut into four or five times.
That hasn't been by borough staff, uh, borough of the boroughs.
Yeah, it's something maybe.
On the third bullet point, says the pump that failed had a sealed motor housing and required no recommended regular maintenance. What was the maintenance? What, what is the PM schedule for that set pump?
There is, there is no. It's a sealed motor housing. There's no maintenance.
So you just don't even check it once a year to make sure anything's?
To run the failure part.
Well, they, they check it every day.
Outside of?
There's no oil fittings or grease fittings. It's kind of like your bearings on your car nowadays, that you don't have grease fittings. They're just, you just run them until they start to, start to scrape and then you replace it.
No preventative maintenance?
No.
And I thought it was kind of odd, he goes into detail about the 3,963 gallon difference that we talked about last month. It's the same exact difference this month. It just seems odd that that same 39, 3,963,000 gallons difference again. Was there an update for number one on July 31st?
No, I didn't monitor that.
You have one for August?
I spoke to the end and all of this, yes.
Any movement on that?
You can pull them back on the road and be compliant.
So that the weather still continues to be an issue for putting in the driveway?
Maybe had other issues outside of their control with that property, so the solution is to move it back on the road and then they'll be compliant with the zen ones or the unenclosed storage ones, I should say.
Travis suggested that, is that right? I think that's the way to do it.
If he puts it back on the road, then we're gonna have the traffic problems again.
So school buses start backups soon?
Yeah, I think we might, so.
Yeah, there's additional practice runs today.
And see number six was closed, and just looking at the picture, is the trunk of that still growing up and attached below the house number? Is that part of that wisteria that can come, that can come back?
They cut it off the ground.
At the ground?
So what is that growing up there? Is that a weed?
That's just one piece, but the, all of it that was up top, that was growing in the shingles and that's been all pulled down.
Are we gonna have a problem with what's growing up there now? If that's part of the whole wisteria and it's a set in place, it shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any thing there, do you think?
I mean, it's cut off at the ground.
You know, that stuff grows.
That rolls right into the last one, closed and it was taken care of. That quality of life ordinance that we put in place going forward, that'll apply if that's turned in again, correct?
Yes.
And then so that'll apply for that wisteria?
Yes.
If we have to do that again.
If it's a, if it's a, one of the ordinances that is regulated by a qualitative life, the quality of life citations can be utilized to enforce that ordinance.
The second one on, the second one on there for 39 Washington. Um, that's a renter, I believe currently. The owners have moved to Florida, so you're not gonna get the district magistrate, they're not coming back to Florida.
Tomorrow.
What, it's tomorrow?
Thursday.
They're not gonna be here. Is that a waste of our time?
My understanding is they are.
I guess what we're getting at is should we redo that for the tenant instead of the owner?
One of those, one of those situations. So.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was cleaned up.
Not well, but.
I mean, it's kind of all pushed around the side of the house, but.
It goes back to February when their compliance was due on 12, on 17, we filed the criminal complaint and then it just took.
Gotcha.
It took that long until they were able to serve, obviously because they moved out of state.
Oh, but it has been served? Well, yeah, it has because he called me. He said, how am I supposed to do this when I'm in Florida?
Yeah, the.
I said, get somebody, you know, a neighbor or somebody to clean it up for you. So I thought it had been semi-cleaned up pretty much.
Yeah, well, not, since, since February, yes, but by the time the citation was filed out.
Gotcha. While we're talking about zoning and code enforcement, do you want to come up with a renter's ordinance that you like and then, you know, be kind of, for us to reuse next month?
Do that.
And we've still got some places renters that don't have NOx boxes. Way for you.
Yeah, and all those, now remember, it's just a simple unit, it doesn't ask.
Multi, like six?
Uh, three.
No, well, I think there's six units. Yeah, there's six units in this one building.
Okay, sorry.
I think there's two, I think there's two buildings in the same area. Okay. Can I ask you? I'm sorry. I had asked, we do have an ordinance on the books that anyone who rents has 30 days to give notice to the borough as to who they've rented it to and if they move out, they have, I think, 30 days to notify us because right now we don't know who's living where, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I mean, that, that ordinance was put into effect for cap and tax reasons. The only other solution that we have that is that the bill has been, utility bill has been changed to tenant's name.
So are you saying we should probably get rid of that ordinance or?
Yes, if you're going to look at a rental ordinance, that ordinance needs to, it won't apply at that point.
Gotcha.
Yeah. But yes, it's still there. That's part of the complete code analysis that we're working through with general codes. If that's one ordinance, it's not utilized, it will still be updated to a full rental ordinance or if it did move.
Okay.
Yeah.
Recreation and development.
That's it.
Oh, sorry. On the New Haven, how many phases is there to your knowledge or you're aware of?
The application is all for New Freedom Borough and there's no talk of a second phase at this time. If there would be a second phase, it would all occur in Shrewsbury Township.
On the other side of the stream? Is that what the street?
Other side of Kerschner.
The Freedom Borough doesn't go all the way up to Kerschner.
It doesn't go all the way to Kerschner, but, I mean, you can use that as a guiding, the, the line kind of parallels Kerschner, it's just towards the New Freedom side. But there's no notation on the current plan for phase two. And during the staff review, the second phase is not really mentioned.
That just means they didn't mention it to you because they have to cover Shrewsbury Township, right? Pretty much, yeah. Looking back at the original plan.
Oh, the original plan.
That they got turned down, yeah. So, yeah, I would bet. I haven't seen any plans or anything to. Did, I haven't seen any plans or anything, does this, does this subdivision, would they have another exit from somewhere else, or is it all from, um, on Cursner?
It would tie into Con, yes.
Anything else? Okay, rec.
Yeah, the, the scouting event was held, um, two weekends ago now? It was. Um, had, last I heard, about thirty people signed up. Um, nothing new on Farmer's Market. Uh, the Freedom Youth, uh, tennis program has been going well, and ended July fourteenth, uh, thirty-six participants, and the program netted fifteen hundred dollars and, fifteen hundred and ten dollars, excuse me. Um, adult tennis, uh, had twelve participants, netting three hundred fifty, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, uh, that one also ended last month on the fifteenth. Pickleball, they said the, uh, participation was down a little bit, I think it was mostly due to vacations, um, netting eighty-seven dollars. Uh, there was some additional expenses for some new pickleballs. Um, parade, uh, they said that they'd like to thank Borough council members who participated in the parade this year, Andy, Erica, Burnell, and the mayor, and myself. Uh, they received donations from community, the county commissioner Doug Hoke and friends for two hundred dollars, and twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-five dollars from Gil Ice. Um, again, concerts in the park, first concert will be on September twenty-third, I'm sorry, August twenty-sixth, and the second one will be on September, uh, twenty-third, that one will be the concert, the karaoke concert, both of them from six to nine. Uh, the concert on the twenty-sixth, Stones Burgers and Fries, will be the food truck. On the twenty-third, uh, Two Guys and a Grill will be on the food truck for that night. Uh, I believe that they've already secured, um, desserts from the senior center, and I don't think I have it on here, but again, um, alcoholic drinks will be provided by seven. Other than that, that was really it. Any other questions?
We already talked about EMS and fire.
What type of infrastructure? What are they doing on the shoulder all along Summit Grove that they were...
They're doing the repaving, right? Isn't that what, what they said?
How come they have to do that eighteen, twenty inches? I mean, is that what they're doing? It looks like they're just...
That's the shoulder work.
Adding, is that all they're doing?
Uh, that's part of, the portion of that project, yes.
And how come that has to be put on, like that, one of them decided to add?
The shoulder needed to be repaired.
So they're not adding it, they're repairing what's there, they're taking it out?
Yes.
Okay, I thought they were, it looked like there's adding it.
That, that street is an old concrete street, so you can't just extend the concrete, you have to do something else, right? That was a concrete street.
Yeah.
Do you have anything on the Siskiyou Centennial Committee?
Yeah, the one thing, coming up to twenty-third, we're having a meeting where we're gonna discuss the sign in that, for down, that March Goodfellow Park. So that's, that's about the only thing we have going on right at the present, but that's our next thing.
We're not doing the baseball game?
Oh, no, they, I, I found out that the group that was going to do it wasn't interested, so it's sort of like...
When's the meeting for the sign?
Twenty-third.
How much money do we have to put toward that sign?
We, we would have to look and see exactly how much there is available for that, that's one of the things we're gonna discuss.
But I know you're saying the balance will go towards...
Yeah, yeah, that's what we wanna, wanna see.
The reason I, the only reason I'm bringing this up, I thought that perhaps, and I, I think you and Andy and Andrew made, that maybe it would be nice to put two signs, one smaller sign up top, and another sign down by the equipment, so people, you know, 'cause old people pull in that parking area, and they never know it's March Goodfellow Park, and it'd be nice to have a second one, and if you need contact on somebody that does great signs, I have a, a good girl down in Parkin.
Exactly, 'cause I know that Jenny had some, you know...
I don't have a sign contact, I was just catching it.
Oh, well, you just have like the supplies, okay.
I have a sign contact, too, if you need something, but, okay. Two signs is a good idea, huh?
Yeah. Do you know roughly how much money was left?
Uh, based on the amount of money that was raised, and what has been spent so far, there would still be an additional fifty-five hundred dollars.
I thought it was, yeah.
Yeah, that should, that should give us a pretty good, uh, we could get the two of probably out.
Yeah, I'll get the rest. Pushing your building to give me information is a little hard, but I'll try and have all that ready for the meeting, so that we can see what's left for the actual sign and stuff.
Yeah, 'cause I, that was the one thing, I, I wasn't sure what we had left either. I know we, we were gonna try, you had some people that had some supplies that we could probably get, so, yeah, that...
Yeah, here should be overdo it.
Uh, any additional public comment?
Could I say something?
Sure.
I wanted to sort of, I wanted to commend the people in New Freedom, for the way they acted through this wind business that we just had. I saw more people work together and help each other more than I had seen in a long time.
That's good.
And I mean, I was real, I was impressed, because when, when I went to have, when I had my mess to clean up, I had seven people come and offer to help, they wanted the help. And I'll tell you what, that was...
It is great, things like that do bring a community together. People sharing generators, running their extension cords from their house to their neighbor's house, so they could hook it into the refrigerator, what have you, I know it really...
There was, there was another interesting one that was going on, it was, you remember the phone service was messed up, but, but some of them worked, and some didn't, and now our neighbors, the Goodfellas, were loaning their cellphone to other people that lived close by, that needed to get out, so they could get, uh, I was kind of impressed by all the people.
Well, our Public Works people worked their butts off for that, too, they did a great job. I got so many comments and compliments about the, the branch pickup and, and everything, I think they came out Friday already?
Oh, yeah.
Friday, they were starting, they really jumped on it.
And Med Ed also.
They did a great job.
Because I talked to, um...
Wasn't just Med Ed, it was Ohio, Indiana, we got all kinds of people coming in.
The fellow that was working in our section, and he was one of the longtime Med Ed employees, and he said, uh, he's been in Florida and Louisiana, you know, when they had some of these storms over the years, but he said that this was one of the biggest messes that he's ever seen in this area. He said, uh, I said, "This, this one is by far the hardest to..." That's hard to believe, I mean, there's been a lot of...
There were a lot of, yeah. Okay, I would entertain a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thirty seconds.
We get to sign them out?
Yeah. Oh, sign them out, yeah.
Uh, on the, yes, on the danger plan, everyone needs to sign, the other one, I think they only have two signature blocks on there. So there should be four copies, and so, top line on that one.
Well, you're like, I mean, it's after normal, but...
This one, um, chippery, yeah.